Ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much for joining us today. And, you know, I love the presence. I wish we would have had more attendees. But this is on the STRs, short-term rentals. We'll be opening up a study session. Is Mr. Miyake coming? Is anybody from the administration coming? Typical.
I guess it's all us.
All right. Well, the good news is, we have Sally with us today who's excited. And Sally will, God willing, be our note taker, if that's okay. And so I'm gonna look at you, Sally, since we're gonna be kind of... And look, I'm gonna make this a free-for-all. I know that sounds a bit crazy, but the reality is, I wanna hear from the residents and what you guys believe is best. And so we're gonna come up with this together. My time's up. I know that there are some individuals that have asked for, you know, extra time. And I know that there are a lot of individuals here that are going to wanna speak out and talk about what they've been through. You know, and to not keep this long-winded, we know struggles and what's taking place. And I can tell you firsthand for me, I'm on your side. And I'm gonna advocate with you guys on saying, there is no room for the short-term rentals. I think the slum lords are taking over our neighborhood. And let's look at the reality, because I did my own research on this before coming up and speaking tonight. And in 2008, when the city was going through its financial hardship, the entire country, homes, unfortunately, in the south end, were going for like $10,000. So a lot of these really big investors purchased these properties for $10,000. Today, these investors are making $1,600, $1,700, $1,800 a month. At first, they were making $600, $700 a month. They have went up almost 300% on some of these rental properties across the city. And then they're finding out, well, man, if I'm making $1,500, $1,700 a month, I can turn it into a short-term rental and make $1,800, $1,900 a weekend. And so now they're making what they were making a month, every weekend. And it's unfortunate, because we're not seeing, these STRs are not coming in and saying, "Well, you know, I'm here to do it temporarily," or "I'm coming to visit, you know, a sick family member." And I'm sure there are some out there. There are some out there, guys, and we can't take that away. But the mass majority have ruined it for those small, good tenants. And so I personally wholeheartedly believe, when I bought my house, I didn't, you know, I didn't purchase my home to say, "I wanna live by a commercial." And so I stand with those who feel like enough's enough. It seems like we do have somebody here from administration. So thank you, Mariana. But I will say, we are going to take notes. And Sally, if you don't mind, Councilwoman, so thank you for coming in. Councilman Conson, thank you also for coming in. And I'll allow the council members to also give their point across on this one. If this is okay, Sally, if you can write this down. Anybody, this is what the next ordinance should state. Anybody that markets on any type of program for an STR in the city of Dearborn Heights should be fined, and that should be held by the ordinance department, at a minimum of $1,000. Anyone that hosts a STR in the city of Dearborn Heights will be charged a $5,000 fine per day. And while that, while the host may argue that, it will have to go through the court process. But these are our policies, and it's going to be an ordinance. And if you do host this on a $5,000 per day, it will be levied onto your taxes. And so we're not even gonna chase you for the $5,000. But instead, we're gonna apply, so if your taxes are $7,000 for the year, or $5,000 for the year, and you hosted twice, guess what? Your taxes just went up to an additional $10,000. And so you're gonna think twice before you go ahead and do that. I mean, these are just some of the things that I believe that could be added on. But I'd also like to hear from some of the council members, and I'd also love to hear from some of the residents. And let me tell you, this does not mean that we're gonna be able to come out and arrest somebody if they do an STR, because that's way over the police department's pay grade. It's still gonna happen. But what we can tell you is, when we have ordinances in place that say, "You're breaking the rules, these are the fines, you're gonna be charged the fines," we're gonna hold that. We're gonna hold that. And there's gonna be a zero tolerance. At least I can tell you, as long as I'm around in the city, there's a zero tolerance for this. But if anyone else here would like to speak or add on to this?
Council Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman Conson.
One thing we wanna do is, well, if the fine isn't paid within 60 or 90 days, then it goes on the tax rolls. We don't wanna run afoul of any...
Sure, we can add that. We can do, if it's not paid within 30 days. No late fees. $5,000 per day, I think that's a lot of money, guys. You do three days, you're paying $15,000. I don't know how many more penalties you wanna add on to the penalties. But let's be realistic. But I know Councilman, former Councilman Ray Muscat has always said, "Hit 'em in their pockets." And so today, we're here to hit 'em in their pockets. And I think, you know, the mass majority of the community is tired of it. And I can only imagine why. But, you know, as investors that did invest, they saw an opportunity and they took advantage of it. But we're now saying, "We're not in there, we want our city back." Anyone else would like to add anything on this?
Well, I guess the main thing about the STRs is, we are not a vacation destination. We are a community of homes and families. There are hotels just outside the city limits that people can stay at, within a reasonable driving distance. You know, if it was like 20, 30 minutes, that's a different story. But within five minutes, you can find a hotel outside Dearborn Heights, easily. So yeah, I agree with this totally.
Yeah. And I agree with the councilwoman. We don't have a museum, we don't have any colleges, we don't have a hospital. We're really a bedroom community for residents. We're not a bedroom community for commercial. And the truth is, had we had some type... And I get it, people wanna come in from out of town, they wanna see... Because people have reached out, that side has reached out and said, "I'd like to have a sit-down with you about, you know, people that are coming from out of town." Hyatt is a beautiful place. Stay downtown. We're only 15, 20 minutes away from Detroit. You know, go stay at the Dearborn Inn, it's beautiful. A little bit expensive, but it's about the same price that you pay for this. You know, and they're gonna do your bed. You know? And so those are just some of the things that I believe. And, you know, I know certain individuals have said, like, "Let's do this, you know, let's break it down in districts." We don't have a business, we don't have a downtown business district. And if we eventually do, and I pray that one day we do, and we have housing on top of commercial, sure, go ahead, you can allow that. But as of now, we don't have that, so that doesn't fit the criteria. Councilman?
Council Chair, did you check with Gary or anybody about the fines and how we can apply it? And if we can put them in taxes after they're not paid?
Well, I mean, these are my recommendation, and if it means like...
I'm all in, just wanna make sure that we're doing it the right way, like I said before, so we don't jeopardize the city's position for any lawsuits or any...
Sure. I mean, these are, and these are our ordinances. So, and I believe there was one more thing that I want, Sally, if you don't mind. When you're getting your certificate of occupancy and you're filling out a form, there needs to be a legal description that says, "I acknowledge that I can be charged a $5,000 fine if I ever host this home as an STR." And so the acknowledgement has already been made with a signature. And it should, it should take place in two parts. A signature should be the acknowledgement, and then a signature for the overall certificate of occupancy. And so that we're not, we're not telling the resident, "Well, I didn't know." Well, when you got your, when you bought your home... And I believe also that when this resolution goes out, that this form needs to be mailed out to every single non-homestead home to acknowledge and sign. And so, and a breakdown, so that the individual can't come back, "Well, I bought my house in 2003, and I'm renting it out." Well, there's been a new ordinance put in place. And so maybe we add that to the resolution, and so that people get, you know... And look, we have to do a good job as a city as well by marketing this and saying, "There's a zero tolerance for any type of STR."
Yeah, we want the person, the homeowner, to sign something saying that they acknowledge that short-term rentals are not allowed, that there's a fine of X amount per day, when they, that be a condition for them to get their certificate of occupancy.
Thank you. Councilman Wonsol?
Thank you. You know, about nine months ago, I had a resolution to ban short-term rentals in the city. And it was turned down because we were, they were working on an ordinance. But the problem, probably with the ordinance, we didn't have an ordinance for short-term rentals, so they're illegal. If you don't have an ordinance for a business, it's an illegal business. It should've been six, nine months ago, it should've stopped right then and there. But we've been working on an ordinance ever since. And the thing about ordinances, they're only as good as you enforce them. And we can't even enforce people cutting their grass. And I've, and I've said, over a year ago, when I pushed for these extra ordinance officers, I wanted one ordinance officer just to be for rental properties. Specifically, nothing else, rental property. We have enough rental properties, we could probably keep five ordinance officers busy. So, I mean, all this is good, this could've been, you know, taken care of a long time ago and banned it, and we would've been nine months ahead of where we are now. Because there's no place for short-term rentals in Dearborn Heights. I mean, no one likes them. Raise your hand if you like short-term rentals. Oh, yeah, okay, okay. Well, obviously, it's a business. And in the residential area, you can't have, cannot have a business in a residential area. You know, so I mean, that's a business. It should be taxed differently, like a business is taxed. You get taxed by the square footage, like a business is taxed. But it's just, it's, it should be illegal, and if we're gonna have, even if we have short-term rentals or not, we should have an ordinance officer and hire it again, and hire another one just for rental properties. Because even the ones that rent for years, we have problems with them. So we need an ordinance officer specifically for rental property.
I'm just gonna just say, just to kinda say, respond to Councilman Wonsol, if I may. I agree. Councilman Wonsol did ask that we put forward a ban on it. And you're right, you answered your question. We apply your ban, who's gonna enforce it? There was no structure, nobody said how it was gonna be enforced, that's number one. Two, our legal has said that if we went with your resolution, we could be sued. Now, we went through the proper channels, we've sent this over to the planning commission, the minutes were approved, it was approved by the planning commission, we're sending it back here, we're saying, "This is how it's going to be enforced, this is the role of the ordinance department, this is gonna be the role of the police department." And so that's how the enforcements can now be, because we can't just blindly say, "Well, we're gonna ban 'em all," and just say that we put a resolution. There needs to be an ordinance put in place. And so today, what we're working on is our third reading for an ordinance, to get down the facts and the details, and so that things work out for everybody.
I've got a question, I'm gonna think out loud. If we start fining them $5,000 a day, now, we're saying some of those properties sold for $10,000, right? We're gonna put it on their taxes. Let's say they just don't pay their taxes for a couple of years and continue to do the short-term rentals and just walk away with all the extra money, because they're only losing basically $10,000, which they've already gained back. Is there any way, I'm thinking, that after so many times they're caught, or they get to a certain dollar amount, that we RUD tag the property and make it not suitable to live in until they bring it up to date?
Well, the problem is, if it has a C of O, squatters have laws.
Well, I'm thinking RUD tag it for improper use, like running a business out of a residential property.
That still has to go to court. Council Chair, I'm sorry to...
And it might be a deed thing, because I have a friend who is into appraising properties. And there was some terminology she was telling me recently about, if it's on a deed, it can only be used for residential use only. I can find out the wording, and she told me, "Look at my deed, because it may be restricted in my neighborhood if that is on a deed for my subdivision." So there is, because she does a lot of appraising in a lot of different cities, and she says, "It keeps coming up, and that's what they're using."
I don't know if you can put a deed restriction on any property that you sell. I don't think a title company would allow that.
There's deed restrictions on subdivisions. Mine goes back to 1955, saying, "There's nobody can go up two stories in my subdivision." And it still is on the deeds. It's registered with the actual subdivision.
I don't know, I'm not an art in that. Maybe, maybe we can look at it.
Yeah, so something we need to check into, because it might help save us some time there to just, you know, not everything's gonna be that way.
Council Chair, I'm sorry, but it seems like we're wasting our time here. There's nobody from administration, ordinance is not here, the lawyers are not here. And with all due respect, none of us are, have the expertise in the law with the...
Well, that's what we're doing, we're just putting down facts, and we're gonna add...
Yeah, but the thing is, it's a situation, it should go back and forth. Like, probably Bob is the only one, probably, you know, I'm sorry, Councilman Conson is the only one that'll probably be familiar with, you know, rental law. So it just seems like we're just, we talked the same thing last time, and even I asked the ordinance, I was like, "What's your plan with, you know, enforcing those short-term rentals?" There's nobody here to show us the plan.
We need them on board with us.
Yeah.
Hear it now, in real time, and not hearsay later what they had to say. We wanna hear it directly from them.
Guys, what we're doing right now is, we're taking the opinion of what people would like to, we've went through the second reading three times. All right? Councilman Wonsol put a resolution forward, Gary Miyake put in a resolution forward, it went to the planning commission. We're now, and then when we were about to make a vote on a second reading to finalize it, the resident said, "Hold on, let's talk about it, let's get some more details and add some things to it." Right now, I can tell you right now, an acknowledgement doesn't need to have legal testimony that there's an acknowledgement that a resident is about to sign off on. Sure, it's gonna be challenged, everything's gonna get challenged in court. You may come back and say, "They're gonna lose, or they're gonna win." This is an opinion of this, personally, this might be an opinion of this attorney, ends up ultimately going to court.
I totally agree, Council Chair, we all agree, we're gonna ban 'em in the city. But Councilwoman, she just suggested like a deed restriction. I mean, pretty much, there's no way you can do a deed restriction.
I know that.
So that's what I'm saying, I mean, if we have the experts in here, at least we can give them the right information, so they can know exactly what we're voting on, or we're gonna be voting on in the future.
Well, that's why we're adding these details, we'll get it over to the special legal counsel, he'll add it, and this will be the final resolution, we'll read it over. And if legal feels like, "Yes, this could be done," they're gonna add it. If they say, "No, you can't do this, like, because of this law or this reason," it won't be added on.
I'd like to clarify what I said. I meant that it would already be part of your deed, on your properties, right now and here. It's probably been there for a while. She says, "A lot of people have that on their deeds that don't even realize it." So I will find out. She's an appraiser, so she knows what can...
I know, you mentioned probably a subdivision, but not all the cities have divisions.
No, but it might help us in a lot of the city, because there is a lot of subdivisions in our city already.
So this is, this is probably more work on the lawyer to find out if...
Councilman Conson?
Yeah, what we wanna avoid is having anything that could be overturned or...
Hang on, guys.
Because it's a disguised tax or penalty. Obviously, no one would, if we had a requirement in ordinance that every deed, property that's sold, have on there that it's for residential use only, that wouldn't fly, people wouldn't... But we have an ordinance that no short-term rentals are allowed, a fine, and...
An acknowledgement.
It can't be a disguised tax, but a heavy fine, and enforcement, and the house can be boarded up. People lose their certificate of occupancy, and the house can be boarded up, and the property...
Can you lose your certificate of occupancy?
If the fine isn't paid, it can go on their tax rolls, and the house, the property can be sold to pay the fine.
Okay.
It could be, the fine could be higher than what the property is worth in the end, if you let it roll, a whole year worth of...
I'm gonna go to Councilman Saab, and then I'll go to Councilman Wonsol. I told Councilman Saab, Madam Clerk, that he could speak, because I know he's on vacation.
Good evening.
Good evening. If your Wi-Fi's not good, we're gonna cut you.
My Wi-Fi is great. So a few things I just gotta put in on this procuremental. Everybody's speaking, speaking ideas, they're not speaking facts, to be honest with you on console. You can't put deed restrictions. You can't tell people what restrictions they can have on their property, that's against the law. Number two, no matter what resolutions put forward, it's gotta be enforced. The only way it's gonna get enforced is not through ordinance, it has to be enforced through the police department. And this is why all other cities around and across the country, they're dedicating a direct police officer for that kind of work. Directly for short-term rentals with its own unit, that they go after, not ordinance, because to be honest with you, our ordinance is not gonna do it, they're not gonna enforce it, the administration's not gonna enforce it. Although this is going back to a third reading, I don't think anything will happen until next year, because they're not gonna enforce it. But what should happen is, this should go through the police department, not ordinance. Because this is nothing more than a fine against the property and go to court. It would be just taking more manpower out of ordinance, which already, again, does not go after a lot of the ordinance, just because they're short-staffed. Adding this on to them is not gonna help. It's gotta be a dedicated officer who has the authority to go on the property, who has the authority to issue tickets, and possibly has authority to arrests if people are out of control, drunk, weapons, or something. Ordinance doesn't have that authority.
Yeah, Council Chair, asking a question. Councilman Saab, how you suggest the police department to enforce the short-term rentals?
So this would be a dedicated, this would be a dedicated position through the police department?
No, no, I understand, and I understand, but if they go in and they find somebody in that house, they're gonna give them a ticket, correct? That's about it, same thing, like the ordinance. Do you think they're gonna arrest the people inside?
But unlawful people, of course.
I don't think, I don't think they can arrest, I don't think they can arrest the people.
Of course they can.
I don't think so.
Look what's going on for disturbance, or something?
If they're disturbed...
Guys...
If there's disturbance, if there's no disturbance, they're not gonna arrest nobody.
Hold on, let Councilman finish his question.
Well, my point is here is that, if ordinance goes out to a property that's short-term rental, and we're gonna use, be hypothetical here, if somebody's drunk or on drugs in that unit that's renting out, to issue that ticket, or to go to see what's going on, what authority do they have, or what protection do they have? So you're gonna sign out an ordinance officer, then they're gonna call the police to come back out, then now you're wasting double or triple the resources in the city. You hire a sworn officer, and it's a dedicated person, just like a community officer, a liaison officer, a community officer, this can be a short-term rental position directed to that. And believe me, it's not a one-day job a week.
Councilman, I just want you to know that if somebody, if the host is allowing the short-term rental, they're the ones that are gonna be issued the ticket. The person that's coming in to rent it from St. New Jersey is not gonna get the ticket.
I understand.
Hang on one second. Yeah, if they are doing something illegal, let's just say vandalizing the neighbor's house next door and causing ruckus, yes, 911 is going to take down that car, whether it's a STR or a regular home. So it doesn't need to be a sworn officer that just sits and waits for STRs in the city. The truth is...
Council Chair, you gotta remember too, the city opens up four days a week. What happens Friday, Saturday, Sunday, who's gonna enforce it?
Absolutely, and that's why you need to have an ordinance officer, one, you need more ordinance officers, okay? You can't have three ordinance officers, four max, and then, and think they're gonna run 30,000 homes across the city. Four officers, four ordinance officers, just not gonna happen. So you need more ordinance officers. And, and there needs to be a better structure where you're stagnating these employees, so that they're not just working Monday through Thursday. Somebody can work Thursday, Friday, Saturday, you know, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. The other three can work Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or the other four, and the other four.
Council Chair, we have about an average of 280 rental, short-term rentals that were online. Our ordinance department, our ordinance department's not issuing that many tickets a month.
Because the administration hasn't pushed them to do it.
Correct. But add another 200, 300 more complaints to their file and bookwork, it's just not gonna possibly be feasible.
All right, Council, we can go back and forth. At this, at the end of the day, you're not going to give a ticket to the, to the person that is renting it. You're going to give the ticket?
No, no, I'm not, you missed my point. This is not about issuing the ticket directly to, if somebody, they go out to a short-term rental, and there's a problem. There's underage kids smoking, there's underage people drinking. Correct, but also that officer, the, first of all, ordinance does not have access to lean or anything. It's in coordination, you're saying, with the police department, which has taken up twice as much manpower. Why not have a dedicated, we don't, Council Chair, there's plenty of room in the police department to make such a unit, as they can also make a traffic unit, every other unit. Hiring a police officer with the fines you're gonna be given, the position will pay for its job.
Council Chair?
Councilman Wonsol is next.
Thank you, Council Chair. And maybe, you know, this, this violation of this ordinance would be an ordinance violation. Maybe we should make it a crime to violate this, not make it an ordinance, make it a law, a crime, where the police have access. And don't they seize property once they do a drug raid on a house, they can seize the property, shut the property down?
Drugs are illegal, renting out an STR is not, it's not a statute where you can, statute limitation, that you come out and say, "That's a crime."
Why not?
Because it's not a crime.
Why not?
You'd have to make it a municipal...
Why can't we make it, oh, do we know, sure, we can't make that a crime?
You would have to go through...
Jaywalking's a crime.
Yes, it's a statue, that is a law, that's...
I know, so why don't we make it that? Why don't we make it a crime to violate this rule?
Council Chair?
Yes.
Three things, number one, we could have a provision that if, after the homeowner, second or third time, the property's declared a nuisance, as if human trafficking and things like that. Number two, at worst, it would be a municipal civil infraction. You can't, so if somebody double parks on their front lawn, it's a violation of ordinance, but that can't be a crime, it can't be a misdemeanor. We don't wanna overdo it. Remember our ban on the hookah lounges that didn't hold up in court? Amir Macklin represented the...
Yeah.
Sky Lounge, so we want this drafted properly.
Council Chair?
Yes.
I mean, I'm sorry, we can stay here all night. This is not gonna be fixed unless legal, ordinance department, building department, and the police department sits together and come up with a plan. We're doing everybody's job, and everybody is not making sense, because we're just wasting time. Everybody has to stay, come together and come up with a plan.
You know, at this time, I think we should let the audience speak, because that's what they came here for, and we don't need to take over the whole meeting, they wanna talk.
Guys, I'm giving, I'm giving the council the opportunity to speak. I never said that the audience won't speak. I've actually said that we're gonna engage everybody, Councilwoman.
Right.
But what I'm gonna give is the elected officials, and if you, if you're done at speaking, then okay, I'll, when, once all the council's done, I'll move it over to the residents. That's the plan. Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
Well, Councilman Conson's done.
One last thing, real quick, and Councilman Ahmad may know about this, they're talking about banning bans on short-term rentals at the state level. So a city, because in a rural area, people wanna be able to rent out their cottages and so forth. So we might wanna put language in there that will survive that. So if there's a ban, if there's a moratorium or a ban at the state level on no short-term rentals, that this, that the property be declared a nuisance, blah, blah, blah.
And I'm sure the legal will get this written, of course.
They're not even close, they're not even close. Actually, they're leaving it for every city, and a lot of cities, they still want it, especially in, especially up north. So they're just leaving it for every city, and actually, there's people still pushing for it. They're trying to restrict it somehow, like having, like, you know, everybody has to have, like, a million-dollar insurance and stuff like this, but it's not even close to be banned right now.
That's, that's...
Yeah, so... Okay. Councilman, former Councilman Muscat?
Thank you, Council, Honorable Council Chair, Council members, clerk.
No time.
You know, I started coming here back in 1998, '97, '98, because of blight, okay? And I gave a letter to pass around, and I think the only people that did not get this was Councilman Hassan Ahmad, Nancy Breyer, and Councilman Saab, when I was still on council. I haven't seen anything change at all on blight or issues, and I consider short-term rentals that are blight, okay? And it's gonna cause even more. You're gonna get someone coming in on a short-term rental, throw this hellacious party, okay? The neighbor's gonna get mad, one day, somebody's gonna pull out a gun and somebody's gonna get killed. That's what's gonna happen, I'm gonna tell you that right now, okay? And as far as ordinance goes, I've wanted this for a long time, and council has the power to do this. Put the ordinance department underneath the police department, okay? Get them deputized, okay? So when they see a car parked on the street that's not supposed there, give them a ticket, okay? This is crazy, okay? We were supposed to have someone in ordinance to look at lean. You have a car parked in a driveway with expired plates, they can't, the ordinance can't do a doggone thing, they can't run the plate. What are we doing? What are we doing? What, we living in the 15th century here, okay? And now the rumor goes that we have a dedicated ordinance officer, who I consider the best ordinance officer out. They're going after him for something. I'm not going to stand for that, okay? This ordinance officer is one of the finest people that we have in this city. People that we dedicate, that we can contact, one of the few we can contact on his personal phone and call him and get something accomplished. I'm not going to stand by this anymore, okay? Because trust me, no one wants me to come back and sit in one of these chairs.
I do.
I'm going to tell you that right now. Because if this happens, there's going to be a problem. There's going to be a major problem with me if something happens to this ordinance officer. He has dedicated his entire time here in Dearborn Heights to this city, okay? And short term rentals, my God, live next door, one of them, I've had rental people living next door to me, and it was horrible, okay? And what does the planning commission have to do with this? You're the body that writes the ordinances, not them, okay? Not them. You know, I went through that when I was on council. What is the planning commission got to do with it? You're supposed to be a body that comes to you, okay, comes to you to okay everything, not the other way around, okay? That's in our charter. That's in our charter. They come to us, or to you, not you go to them.
Well, no, you have to send, it was, they made the recommendation according to create the ordinance.
They make a recommendation and you okay or deny it. But for some reason, planning commission has gone wild, okay? And there's people on planning commission that own a lot of homes. They own a lot of property, okay? And I would trust them as far as I can pick up a car and throw it, okay? And some of them homes are blighted as hell, okay? And I can't just drive down Midway and get onto the corner of Midway and Robindale and look at that house, okay? Come right around the block, the house right next door to City Hall with cars parked on the grass all day long. For God's sakes, it's enough is enough. Zero tolerance. Put the ordinance department underneath the police department. Get them deputized to write tickets. And ordinance department don't work at night. The parties are at night. It's the police who work at night. And the police at least have some way of protecting themselves when the ordinance department does not, okay? It's a police issue if this is the way we're going to go, okay? So please take that to heed as far as having ordinance under police and stop this witch hunt that's going on in the ordinance department. It's a damn witch hunt, and I don't like it, okay? It's a doggone witch hunt, and we need it to stop it. Thank you very kindly for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Sue Kaminsky, Envoy Street. Two things regarding the ordinance officer that's being persecuted. I fully believe he's being persecuted because administration doesn't like the citizens of the city, as evident by them never showing up and the mayor not showing up. And we can go to this gentleman, and he follows through, and we appreciate having someone that listens to us and follows through and takes care of business. And I also will be very loud and vocal if something happens to this man's position, except if he gets a raise and is Director of the Department. The next thing is regarding short term rentals. My husband and I were driving down Warren when there was a party of 100 kids south of Warren near Plainfield. And two of the kids were being chased by the police, and we almost hit one of them because he ran right across Warren in front of our truck. In addition to your very strict rules and large penalties, when we have to dispatch our police, and we had six policemen there, which was our whole police force at nighttime, I think we should be putting a fine to the homeowner to pay for the police. In addition to our police, who were at that party with 100 kids, we had to call in help from Westland and Garden City. And we end up paying them for giving us assistance. This money shouldn't go on us, the taxpayers. It should go on the owner of that short term rental, because there's no way that our police should have been tied up for four hours, by the way, that night. And therefore, we weren't protected. My tax dollars weren't taking care of me because they were at that short term rental. And I strongly object to that. And we have to do something about it. And if we were assessing these fines, maybe we could finally get a police force back to where it was prior to Mayor Bozzi and his destruction of our police force. We're down to 38. We had 63 patrol officers at one time, 38. That is not including the people on disability. It's a crime. This city needs to do something. Thank you.
There's notes.
Lori Moline.
Lori Moline, Berwin Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Couple of things that kind of flew, and I didn't write down. Mackinac City, there's no short term rentals. St. Clair Shores, there's no short term rentals. Traverse City, no short term rentals. Now, it did go to court in St. Clair Shores. The owner of the short term rental attempted, he failed. There's a couple of things that could be tacked on as far as tack on a nuisance and/or health and safety concerns. That's, I think you touched on it, Mr. Constance, I'm not sure.
That it's being used for human trafficking, that underage drinking, yeah, it's a public nuisance.
If you really want to stick it to them, okay, with this grass ordinance, that is also a health and safety concern, okay? You can go after them for that, too, if you shorten, if you could shorten the time that they have to cut it. I mean, you can be sneaky, okay? It's doable. You know darn well that they're not cleaning it up. You know darn well that they're using it as a passive activity. What is a passive activity? A passive activity is when you're using a rental for less than 14 days, okay? What happens? They're not taxed on that income. Did you know that?
Yep.
Did you know that? Well, I have a rental down the street. Let me tell you about that. On Monday, June 2, at 4:59 a.m., I heard the police on a loudspeaker. Couldn't quite make out what they were saying, but guess what? Prior to that, I heard something, and I went, what the heck is that? It was gunshots, four houses down, okay? I went outside, and I watched as young people exited the home at the corner of Berwin and Figarilla with their hands up, okay? The residence is obviously a short term rental, and I later learned that morning, and mind you, this was a Monday. That was a graduation party that was being held. And just a little tidbit for anybody that seems to think we're just a bunch of Karens up here, just trying to put the kibosh on something because we don't like it. Three hours later, two little girls stood at that very same corner and were picked up by a bus. Three hours later, on a Monday, after gunshots, we're on that corner. Three hours later.
A school bus.
A school bus. At an intersection, which I'm going to toot my horn, finally got a stop sign. Yay, it's a four way stop. It just drives me insane that people seem to think that we're just up here ranting to rant. This is safety for our streets, our kids, our grandkids. On a Monday morning at 4:59, on a Monday, there was a graduation party, and shots were fired in the street because the kid felt like doing it. I'm going to shoot up my gun. And the neighbor next door, who has a Ring camera and little children, is beside himself, beside himself. But guess what? Look up the address. It's owned by Berwin LLC. Not a person, an LLC. There's a flag. Kind of makes you wonder. When somebody comes in to do their paperwork because they just bought this home, are you seeing Mr. Berwin LLC?
It's usually probably done for liability purposes. And if somebody gets injured in the home, they go after the LLC and not the personal person. But you can always trace the LLC.
Is that something, Mr. Baydoun, that can, what is, I guess my question would be, what is the purpose of an LLC on a house?
Legal liability.
If it is a long term rental or a short term rental? Does this happen with any type of rental in our city?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. It's actually, again, I think it also goes to being like, you know, your elected officials in Lansing allowed things like this to be happening, right? They gave homeowner rights to be able to say that if somebody wants to allow them to be able to put this in an LLC, the city didn't make those laws. You got to go back to your state reps, your state senators. And I feel like a lot of those were fought in like big city areas, Ann Arbor, Lansing, things like that, were able to lobby to allow things like this happen.
So you're all taking notes as we're speaking, correct? I just want to throw that in there. The other question was, am I clear that every council person that's sitting here today and via Zoom is 100% against short term rentals? Do I have that clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we show hands for that, please?
That would be great if I could see hands. Can I see hands?
Come on, guys. I think this body has all unanimously has said multiple times.
We are in support of it.
You know, like, I have to give my kudos to everybody on this council, including Councilman Sob.
Okay. I just want to make it clear. I pretty much know, but there's people who have not been here, don't know, don't follow the city, don't watch the meetings. I encourage everybody to watch the meetings so you know, you know, this kind of stuff is going on. And while we're on the topic of notifying homeowners, you know, back in the day, we had this really cool thing. It's called a newspaper, okay? And whenever anybody died, all of a sudden, the bank's blasting it up there. Mr. and Mrs. Callison have passed, their children, blah, blah, blah. There's reasons for doing a legal notice, okay? Is that an option when the city changes an ordinance? Somebody tell me that this is posted in periodicals
It always has to be posted.
So that it's clear.
But if I may, Lori.
I'm sorry, I'm so late today, but I had a lot.
Yeah, it's okay. You can take, we can stay here all day. I'm not upset.
I'm not going to.
But what I will tell you is, look, guys, let's face it for what it is. All right, we can talk about who's going to enforce it, who's going to enforce it, who's going to enforce it. If the person in the administration that's the, you know, has the autonomy to be able to make the decisions, if they're not taking it serious about saying, we're putting an end to short term rental, digitalizing it, putting out the message, saying, hey, Dearborn Heights, this and so and so, until the message is being strong-armed, digitalized in the newspaper, nobody's going to take.
Whose responsibility is that? Is that council or is that administration?
Guys, I want to make something clear. The council is a part-time body.
Okay.
The clerk is the one.
I'm asking the questions for educational purposes because I already know the answer.
Okay, yes. The CEO, the one that makes the decisions for the entire city ultimately stands as the mayor.
Okay.
The fiduciary of how the money is spent is through the city council.
So that would have been the plan, or could be the plan, be the next mayor who takes office is going to make sure that this is followed through to the letter, crosses their i's and dots their i's and make sure everything is going to be on the up and up, let us pray.
God willing.
That's pretty much all I had. But, you know, I want to thank you, Council Chair. I want to thank Councilman Sob, if he's listening, because let me tell you something. When you hear gunshots, and I was raised, I know how to use a gun, I hunted up north, I know what it sounds like.
In Talonza, Michigan, lakes of the north.
There's no mistaking it. But I want to let you know, and I want to let Councilman Sob know, that morning, I was a mess. I was a mess. It's four houses away. Two little girls, three hours later, stood at that corner, at that very corner, and these shots went up in the air three hours prior. I was a mess. I appreciate you. I appreciate Councilman Sob. I appreciate you getting back with the homeowner next door. Abbas, he was, he was, he was, and still is, very upset. I'm sorry.
Yes, okay. Guys, that's. Guys, come on, come on. Yes. And I want to give everybody the opportunity, and so I thank you for that.
I'm going to close this, ma'am, and that's why I was saying thank you, because I elected these people, and they took care of me.
Thank you.
And I feel like they deserve the appreciation and their efforts.
Thank you so much, Lori. Thank you so much, ma'am.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry. You interrupted me again. I'm sorry.
Ma'am, if you'd like to speak, you can speak up at the podium. Okay. Yeah, so I hear, because this has been a topic of discussion for a while. I've said when we opened up, I'm going to want to be able to, and if you want to get up and speak, you have the opportunity to get up and speak.
Why don't you come up right now? I'll give my spot to you.
Here you go, ma'am. Thank you, Lori.
100%.
We also want to keep this extremely, listen, guys, we can all agree to disagree on things.
Of course.
But we also want to keep things respectful, you know? And if you don't like to have to hear what you want to hear, let's at least be able to respect the time and the audience and for this body, so please.
If I could just, if I could just say one more thing in regards to that.
Please, guys, nothing from the audience.
There was no timer on this.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Joe Rennie, Dearborn Heights on Detroit Street. I think most of you are familiar with me. One thing I've noticed in this resolution is a way of keeping track of how long these people are going to be in here, as far as if they're going to be in 29 days, are they going to be in shorter? The way of tracking it is what I'm getting to. I don't see in this resolution. Is there any way IT Cooper could probably put down some kind of platform that would be available for the police or ordinance to look to see who should be in the home? And I think the host of these short term rentals, or whoever the owner is, should take some of that money and hire somebody to re-register with the city who's going to be in for that 29 days, or do it himself. That's the only way we're going to keep track how long these people have been in there. Now, if ordinance shows up, and that's not the name that matches with what they have on their platform that shows who should be there, that's where I think the fine should start coming in. But until we can track who it is, we have no way of knowing. They could be there for three days, ordinance gets called, they go, we don't know how long they've been here because we have no way of knowing.
Joe, the resolution is to completely ban the STRs, so there would not be somebody in.
I understand that. What I'm telling you is, they're not going to stop. Let's face it. These people are going to stay as long as they want, whether it's three days or 29 days. My point is, how are you going to know, or anybody out to enforce it, if they were only there for three days, if you don't have a way for these people to track, being our ordinance and police, through this platform that should be able to be, come up with by IT Cooper?
Because I'm going to tell you, so what I've requested to be added in here is, if somebody is marketing this STR, that's the first fine.
Oh, I understand.
If we go on that day and that home is being rented out, we will then hold the second fine.
I understood that part of the resolution. My only point being is, how are you going to know who's supposed to be in there, even though it's not a short term rental?
Because nobody's going to, nobody's just going to magically say, oh, wow, the house on Centralia is an STR, unless they're putting it on some type of website, Airbnb, or whatever the three or four different companies out there.
Heed my words. It will happen. Ours is listed as an apartment, not a short term rental or an Airbnb.
But what is it being listed on? An Airbnb. And so if it's. By the way, guys, I can tell, but it says Dearborn Heights. Yes, we know it's Dearborn Heights. Guess what? I can take any house in Dearborn Heights right now. I can take that exact picture. I can snip it, put it on Google, and it'll tell me that exact address. Every time I do an Airbnb. Well, the good news is, we already know what house is having, is being used as an STR. You're right next door. So there's the solution.
We understand.
No, what I'm saying is, you're telling me, how are they going to figure out? Look, this is not going to be a process where we're going to be able to wave our wand and be like, okay, great. But what I'm going to be able to say is, if Barb, the neighbor, has made a complaint that this house is being used as a short term rental, it is now on our radar.
Yeah, but that's where my point comes in about knowing who's supposed to be in that house, because if they're supposed to be no longer short term rentals, there's no reason, once a month, that homeowner can't go onto a site and say, this is who should be in this house, right?
Or the police is going to monitor this home. Hey, we start seeing different people coming.
We're going to start sending police out monitoring all these short term rentals that will not be short term rentals, but will still be used.
I know, Joe, but what I'm going to tell you is, what I'm going to tell you is, once you start enforcing and start making the example, people are going to be afraid and not want to do it. So there's not going to be a thousand homes. Guys, there's not a thousand homes doing STRs. There's a big handful of homes, say 30 homes right now. When you make an example out of one home and you digitalize that example, guess what? People are going to start saying, when we pull up on Detroit Street and you show people are gonna start saying, when we pull up on Detroit Street, and you show what happened on Detroit Street, and you speak out against it, everybody else is gonna be like, alright, man, I'm not doing this in Dearborn Heights, I'm going to the next city.
Okay, so let me ask you this. I called the police out for a problem, right? Because we got somebody out of control. This guy, he came in for a couple days, had a word or two with him, he said he's leaving in a couple of days. What do you want the police to do? How are they gonna prove it's being operated as a short-term rental?
We know, we know that this house is a short-term rental now.
Okay, I don't think you're following my whole point here, Mo. Go ahead, I'm done. Thank you, Mo. Appreciate it.
Council Chair?
Joe, we'll have a conversation, you and I, after.
Council Chair?
Yeah.
I don't know how many people up here use the BSNA. I've used it a lot since I was originally on council, and there is a section in there that shows who the owner is, and then there's another section that shows who the occupant actually is, and it's written on the BSNA. So there is a way of putting it on there, and that's how they know, because the owner will have a different address where they can be reached at, and the occupant will be the address of the rental property.
And, but, you know, so let's just say--
It's already in place.
BSNA.
BSNA.
We can't get out of--
That was not my choice, that was Mayor Bazey's, I did check that out, we never had a say in that.
Yeah.
Because I would have that as being free, I think we do need to have free access to that, it's a very good tool to use.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, Palakud did not.
No.
Oh.
Oh, I had access.
Because you were a council member.
Well, no, all the--
Let's hear from--
All the people on--
Guys, let's not have this conversation, Joe, let's have this conversation from the residents standing up.
Good evening, Council Chair, members of council, members of the audience. I think, because we're sitting here arguing about whatever, one thing we're not looking at, we do have rental properties that are, you know, month-to-month properties and stuff like that, but one of the things that nobody really is considering is, a rental property should have fire suppression systems, okay? Just like a hotel, just like a restaurant or anything else, has a fire suppression system, you're gonna eliminate your rentals, because a fire suppression system for a building is awfully damn expensive, and it should be mandatory.
So, I just want to tell you guys, on having a fire suppression system in a home, well for, but the law is, and guys, we always have to know that there's a law, and so if you want to do it, you have to have X amount of capacity. If you have your capacity at, I think it was like 30 or more, you have to have a fire suppression system.
Well, then let's change the capacity.
Well, if your capacity is a four-three bedroom, there's not gonna be a law that's gonna say you have to, it'd just be fought, and be like, no, I don't need to have one.
Well, let's fight it in court, because I think the laws ought to be changed, right? If you're running a commercial property, all right, that's a life, just like the mayor already has blood on his hands from Joey's deal. You know, what does he want more? Does he want more blood on his hands? This is, you know, yeah, the mayor should be here, but he's hiding at his condo in Dearborn. So, or he's getting driven around, you know, the Fairlane Mall or whatever. So, I'm, well, I'm speaking the truth. What I'm saying is, if you're gonna have a property and you're gonna put people's lives in jeopardy a possibility, these homes aren't fire-rated or anything like that. You build a hotel or anything like that now, it all has to be fire-rated, okay? There's no firewalls in between these bedrooms, so actually, things need to be changed about those laws, especially on rental properties, right? So, consider it, that's just my thought.
What I think a good idea is, you make stronger enforcement, if you do want to do an STR, you have to have one, two, three, four, five in place. I agree, but I don't think you can say, and I think, I know you used the example of a fire suppression, but I get where you're coming from.
Okay.
Love you, Vince.
Love you, too.
Nice haircut.
Hey, you like that?
Good afternoon, everyone, and I want to start with an apology, I'm not the best public speaker out there--
You're doing a phenomenal job, and we're gonna support you.
You know, I wanted to make my voice being heard, because I think there's always two sides to the story, and I'm right here today to actually light up another light on the other side of the story. I do appreciate everybody's opinion.
Ma'am, just state your name and the city you reside in.
My name is Habba Fawaz, and I live in Dearborn Heights, High View Street.
Almott Street?
High View Street.
I'm sorry.
Correct. I've been living in the city my entire life, since I came or moved to USA, and one thing I appreciate in the USA is the freedom of speech, because it allowed me to speak my voice, just I'm gonna do it now. I did hear a couple of opinions, and, you know, it makes me question a lot of things about the things. I'm actually an Airbnb host myself, and probably I'm against everybody in this room, but I did want you guys to hear my side of the story. Somebody mentioned about, like, oh, how long do we have to wait before somebody gets killed? Well, I hear so many stories and homicides happening in Dearborn Heights, about five of them that last two to three months, and it wasn't involving an Airbnb or short-term rental. With that being said, there's a possibility for good and bad in every single city, whether it's a short rental or a long-term rental. The other concern that I had, I heard a lot of those stories, but did any one of you guys ever try to post an Airbnb or host an Airbnb before?
No, just--
Because--
Speak to the chair, though, please.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I kinda wanted just, like, I wasn't sure, as I said, I did apologize for that before. So, one thing you are required, one, when you set up or you list your property at Airbnb or any other short-term listing, you can set your own rules. One example, I don't rent anybody who's not verified by submitting their ID. I don't rent anybody who's under 25 years old. I don't rent anybody that has more or hosts more than six people, because I don't, I'm a mother of three, and they're young, and every time I travel, and which I do travel a lot, I like Airbnbs because it gives me the comfort for my family. So when I listed or created my, listed my property about three years back, I made sure I built it to be that family atmosphere. Have I ever had issues with parties? Probably once in three years, I'm not gonna deny that, but I took the proper, because my neighborhood is very important for me, just like, you know, I don't want somebody having parties or underage people drinking next to my kids. I completely respect that, but that's one case in three years. With that being said, I'm not sure if any members or individuals in this family had somebody who was treating for chemo, for example, or a family member treating for chemo who didn't want to spend time with their family, they rented a short-term member to, you know, to use it for that, so they can be away from their members. I had people like that. I had families that, you know what, they moved here recently to the United States, they wanted a safe area for their kids, because they ran away from a war zone, and they wanted to stay in it for a month or two until they got their things together to move on. I had people that came here as robotic engineers that are working for Ford. I had built these relationships, and my neighborhood is very important to me, just like everyone else, so I always made sure I have these things in place. And also, Airbnb, every booking you get from short-term rental, they are required to purchase a $1 million policy that protects anything that happens in that neighborhood. And when they leave the property, if there's no reports in the next seven days, this is when they get their refund back for that policy. I'm not against, you know, having better communities, more quieter neighborhoods, but I think it's very important for you guys to hear both sides of the story. And one, also, one more thing I saw, in regards to the taxes, I heard somebody mention taxes. Yes, every booking that we actually list or get booked on Airbnb, they deduct a tax right away, that's other than us filing taxes on our income taxes for every single penny we paid, because we do receive a 1099 for that income. So we do pay all taxes that are required. My property is listed as an investment property, so therefore, I'm being taxed the same way as an other investor. I did hear, and I do apologize, I'm not good with names, I did hear somebody when you guys, I was on Zoom call before, when you guys started, I did hear that somebody mentioned, oh, this is a residential area, it's not a commercial area. Well, with all respect, we know a lot of businesses that you can run it from home. As a mother of three, I started my own business from home, right? There's renters out there that rent their houses for about 12 months, yeah. The renting prices are skyrocketing, it used to be 800, right now, I went to rent a family member a house, and it was 2100 for a two-bedroom, right? So if we want to talk that side of the story, and I had one more topic that I wanted to comment on. And I do apologize, I'm a bit nervous, but I really wanted everyone--
You're doing a good job.
--to hear my voice, because like I said, I support for everybody's peace of mind, but there's always goods and bads. You guys are taking away this from people that actually needs it. I think instead of you banning it, you can probably consider certain rules, like for people that don't have complaints, right? Or give warnings, like one or two warnings for these households, if they don't maintain their houses or their rules and follow guidelines, probably ban those, right? Instead of banning it, you know, just probably overlook with these, you said it yourself, there's only a few amount of houses that are being listed, so it's very easy to track them, to know how they're doing in the neighborhood. I think, I don't know if anybody has a question about that as a host, yes.
Ms. Fawaz, what I want you to know is, what is it? Hang on one second. Regardless of how many properties she has, Ms. Fawaz, you may do a phenomenal job at renting out these properties, that's okay, we thank you, but the reality is, the mass of people that are doing this are destroying it for the very small people that are doing. And look, I appreciate the opportunities for people that are doing chemo, that want their families to know, and I appreciate the robotics people that work at Ford, and I, you know, the truth is this, one, we don't have the manpower to sit there and monitor the ones that are good and bad, all right? Like, we don't have that power. But what the power we can say is, we no longer want them and we no longer need them. And if you have a good home in a good residential area, you can sell that property and go buy it in another neighborhood, in another neighboring city, like Garden City allows it, Allen Park allows it, Dearborn allows it in a small business district. The Dearborn Heights really has no reason to have an STR in the city. There is, and guys, and we're not looking for a round of applause, because like this, you know, this is a back and forth, and maybe you're right, you're doing this as a business opportunity, but the truth is, it's not, even if you're opening up a business in your home, and you know a lot of people that are doing it, they're doing it illegally. That's like saying, I'm doing something illegal and I got away with it. As, and I'm not saying your STR is illegal, but I'm saying if you're selling goods from your home, cooking, and, because, you know, I see that all the time, people like making hibachi and stuff, and they're selling it on other, I don't want, I don't, did they go through the health department? There's, like you said, you came to this country because there's beautiful rules and regulation, and it's not a country where you could just come out, it's a free-for-all. It's a question, it's a question on policies, it's a country on policy. And this policy here, I can tell you, right next door to me was an STR. The other night, there was an STR at a lady, at a next door on Dwight Street. I swear to you guys, women, naked, I gotta, just like you have children, I have children, my three-year-old son, showing me seen naked women coming out, smoking cigarettes, throwing bottles at each other, may not happen at your home, it may not happen at your host, but I can tell you, one out of every 10 is good, the other nine are bad. And so it's like, we can't make the decision for that one good home, or those 10 good homes. And so my decision is for the, is saying the majority of this, and I'm somebody that experienced it, that home with the gun shooting, it's around the block from my house, and what I've taught in physics, what goes up, comes down. What if that, what if that went through my, you know, my home, and you're right--
Can I ask you a question?
And you're right, it could have been a regular person.
That's exactly what my question was.
You're right.
It could have been anywhere, does it matter if it's a short-term rental or--
It could have, but what's happening is, the renter and the regular person is not watching the 10 prostitutes walk into a home. The regular person is not just waking up one day and shooting in their neighborhood.
Can I ask you a question? Do you have the statistics of how many calls they were, went to a regular home versus Airbnb homes?
Hold on, and let me tell you, you're gonna see, the majority of the city of Dearborn Heights has 24,000 homes, 23,700 are regular homes, 300, or 700 of them are Airbnbs. So, yeah, the ratio's gonna be a lot higher, so I can't even use that as a statistic.
I completely understand, however, on the other hand, there's a lot of parties that happen, and it's not short-term rentals, right?
I know, let her finish, and I'll give everybody an opportunity to speak.
This is what caused the problems in this city. This city has had this crap before, and that's the crap that ruined--
Ray, come on, Ray, come on, Ray.
That's called an opinion, and we are here in our, we are in the United States to have the freedom of speech. I have every right--
You do.
--to let my voice being heard, whether you agree with it or not, and I respect everybody in here. If you don't agree with me, it doesn't mean I'm standing here saying something wrong. I'm just shedding light on my side of the story.
And you have every right, ma'am.
And I have a suggestion. Instead of you taking that away from that, one out of 10 hosts that actually are good and working to make sure to maintain that for families that are or actually indeed need it, one suggestion you can do, you can, like I mentioned, you can do like a warning program, like you give it a one or two, if I ever get one or two complaints on my house, I'm not allowed to list it, but if I maintained it for the last three years, I only had one complaint in three years, I'm trying as a host to follow the guidelines.
I know, ma'am, but again, it goes back to me telling you, I don't want to have the back and forth, we don't have the man and woman power to be able to do something.
You just said that you might have the ability to hire a whole dedicated department--
To make sure that--
To make sure, you know, for Airbnb are not listening. So if you have the manpower to hire somebody to go after every single Airbnb and find it $5,000, well, come up with a solution, and meet in the middle way, it's fair for everybody on both sides, you can charge us a free monthly fee, and make sure you see our reports that, you know, we don't have any parties, go ask our neighbors, you know, but give us a chance to actually, like, I don't want to go to Garden City, this house is literally across the street from my house, with three kids, young kids, it's more convenient for me, guess what, I'm following rules, I'm paying my taxes, and I'm doing my diligence when I'm listing it to make sure I do the background checks, I'm not listing it for everybody and a youngster, and I completely understand their side of the story. I'm not against what they're saying, I'm just saying, it's good idea to consider the other side of the story, because you're taking it away for the people that actually need it as well.
Thank you.
I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you, guys, nothing from the audience, please, thank you so much, ma'am. And you did a great job, by the way, for public speaking, you did a great job.
Council Chair, I have a question for, if I could ask?
Go ahead.
You know, I have a question, why did you choose Airbnb over long-term rental? I'd like to hear the reasoning in that.
Absolutely.
Do you mind? Just so we know.
So I actually have personal experience--
Can you mic that and ask that question? Hang on, one second, one second. Councilwoman Miloszkiewicz, can you ask the question in the mic, just because somebody around here is gonna hear you?
All right, why did you choose Airbnbs over long-term rental option?
Absolutely. I have a personal experience, when I had a long-term option, my house was destroyed. I couldn't evict the person who stayed in my house. However, a short-term rental, after they were doing something, I spent $100,000 to remodel my house. I'm not gonna go rent it to somebody that I don't know what they're doing to my house after a year, just to go in and see it being ruined. I bought this house specifically because I like this area, I like this city, I have three kids of my own, and I want to make sure, when they grow, they're gonna stay in this city, and this is a way for me to actually get their future, you know, built. So I bought this house, I'm actually closing on a second house in the next few weeks, because I want to make sure my kids don't leave this city. So with me having a short term, it gives me the control to make sure my house is well-maintained. I guarantee most of the Airbnb listings, because you want to maintain your reviews, you always maintain them way better than a long-term short rental, I'm sorry, long-term rental.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Thank you so much. Yes, Councilman, Councilman.
Yeah, the problem is, these short-term rentals are being rented by people, they're doing stuff there that they can't even get away with in a hotel.
Right.
A couple of years ago, I think we all were contacted by
From the audience, please, we gotta keep respectful.
...an older woman on powers near Beach Daily, they called it the party house, the person was renting the house out, and also having, renting cars. And there were terrible problems. Anytime the woman would complain, she'd get threatened and so forth, and she finally, she had lived there for a long time and finally moved out. These people are using these homes for some, for things they can't even get away with in a hotel. If you have a long-term rental, you have accountability, you have a security deposit. If you have a short-term rental, you don't know what's gonna be going on there, but I guarantee you, it's gonna be something not good, something that, you know, if someone's got a loved one undergoing chemotherapy or something, they stay at a Ronald McDonald House or something, they're not staying at these, the short-term rentals, at least in Dearborn Heights. There've just been a lot, lot, lot of problems.
Yes, thank you, Councilman. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Karen, I live in Dearborn Heights, Michigan. I live in the best of both worlds. I have an Airbnb on one side of me, and a rental house on the other side of me. My house is totally immaculate, my Airbnb has brought me prostitutes, has brought me drugs, has brought me Christmas decorations, my manger scene, my Christianity that's important to me, cigarette butts being thrown in my manger scene. I've had this on video, I'm sick of everybody on Facebook because you don't share their opinion, throwing a name at me like I'm a Karen. I'm not a Karen, I'm somebody who cares about my neighborhood and where I live. And as far as ordinance enforcing this, Airbnb's not gonna happen. The rental house next door to me, for three years now, in fact, the past 14 days I've reported that house, the weeds in the backyard are this tall. I've even talked to the ordinance director. So do I think that ordinance can enforce Airbnb short-term rentals? Not in your life.
Yeah, not if you only have three ordinance officers, guys.
Well, I know, but we can't even, we can't even control weeds, grass, mo, I'm just trying to bring a point here.
I know, but like, if we keep saying like, "It's not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen," we're never gonna, we have to start, you're right, our ordinance department currently cannot. When Councilman Wanso put a resolution to tell the administration to hire three more ordinance officers, and we only three that we hired were the three that we lost, you're right.
We're behind, we can never catch up. And as far as Airbnb, the house that's listed next door to me is an Airbnb. Last summer, when I had hookers or whatever you want to call them at my house for 10 days, I called the police department, went down to the police department, made my reports, called Airbnb, because they do have rules and regulations supposed to Airbnb, and so did the person who listed the house. I called Airbnb, and I have my own messages back and forth with them. The house was not rented under Airbnb at that time, they rented it probably on the sly somewhere, not even through Airbnb. I have all the messages from Airbnb on my phone that we back and forth, that the house was not even rented through Airbnb. So for people to get up here and say, "Well, Airbnb has this and this," well, people do things on the sly, and we all know it happens. It's just a fact. That's right, nobody's held accountable. And I just don't understand how, unless you live next door to one and have had all these problems, this is just, it's ridiculous. And if we can't come up with some type of enforcement, I think you guys need to start looking into other cities and ask them, what have they done? You know, what are they doing to make this enforceable?
Look at Dearborn.
Yeah, but Dearborn's still allowing it in their downtown district, so I don't, I don't know what they're doing. Exactly. And I mean, I didn't move, I did not move into my home to live next door to people coming and going, coming and going, and not knowing who they are. And a lot of Airbnb slash short-term rentals, whether you guys want to believe it or not, statistically, a lot of them are for human trafficking, they move kids and women that way. And we've had a few decent rentals, but the majority of my rentals, I want to say 75% have been horrible experiences for me. I'm tired of picking up bottles out of my landscaping, all night long, I'm up. When I, when I had the incident last summer, I actually called the owner of the house, because I have his phone number, on my way to work at 4:30 in the morning after getting no sleep for 10 days, and called him every morning and told him, "If you, I can't sleep, you're not sleeping either. You're in your nice home out in Novi, and you're leaving me with this crap next door, and I need to go to work too." I mean, this is, it's just beyond control. We had the shooting on Berwin, we had the police situation on Plainfield, which I have videos, on the next day, Mo, you know, I went knocking door to door, and I had a resident who gave me videos of what went on that night, and it was disgusting. It's enough. I'm tired of our good neighborhood being invaded by thugs who want to throw parties and do drugs and carry guns around. It's bullcrap. We shouldn't have to live like this. We're taxpayers, and I have just as much rights as a person who owns that Airbnb. And when you start infringing on my rights, it becomes a problem, becomes a problem.
Thank you.
We're accountable.
Thank you, guys, thank you, Angela.
We're not accountable.
How you doing, ma'am? Please state your name, the city you reside in.
Hi, my name is Melanie Chekka, I live in Dearborn Heights, right here on Fenton, actually. I'm a mother of five children, I'm a regular resident, I didn't have a rental, I'm not a profiteer. I am actually up here because it's the right thing to do. I have studied, I am an, I'll tell you about my career in a minute, because it's related to this, but I have studied under some lawyers and legal councils regarding this subject in the past. I put over 200 hours of research, helping legal for another city regarding this subject. I can tell you, as I listened, that you guys really need to consult your legal. I can also tell you, from what I know about Airbnb, is that it's the most vetted, most accountable type of tenant that you can have. None of you, okay, so she asked, the other lady asked if anyone even tried it before as a host. I have learned about this, and I've talked to other hosts who do it, and I'm an advocate for freedom, but I've talked to other hosts who have done this, we're in America, and we're not in China, but I have talked to other hosts who do this, and they are able to, I checked that Berwin Street, by the way, it is ran by a lady named Tabitha, well, it was the only one I could find. I only found 10 houses in Dearborn Heights, by the way, not 30. Okay, well, maybe they didn't pull up.
Guys, this has been our experience.
Okay, well, that's what I found today when I looked, but sometimes the dates change things. I do know how the app works. Regardless, on Berwin Street, they also have a tab up that says events are allowed. So this host is running a commercial business out of her home by allowing events. Airbnb allows the host to have full control. For heaven's sake, Airbnb, for heaven's sakes, short-term rentals are allowed to have cameras. Have you ever tried to rent-run from Florida? They put a camera over, like, on every angle of their house. They're allowed to be evicted immediately. A long-term resident, a long-term rental, they take months to evict. Have you ever had a squatter? And then let alone a permanent resident. We have 98 sex offenders in this city, and you're talking about, like, being parents and caring? You know, like, long-term, okay, short-term rentals, you know, like, I lived in another city years ago, next to a short-term rental, and I want to give my perspective, I know some people have bad experiences. The house next to me had a permanent resident in there, and that was a drug house. People were doing stuff on their front lawn in front of my kids. When that house was bought and turned it in beautifully fixed up as a long, as a short-term rental, and we only had it occupied 50 days out of 360 days, and when the host came, it was a family, they'd cut our lawn for us and everything, they fixed up the place, because nobody's gonna pay, you know, 200 to 500 a night and be some riprap, okay? Like, these people are high-quality people, and this is where I'm gonna, this is where, how, there are so many points I wanted to make, forgive me. Long story short, you think they're all riprap, but do you want to know something about me? I am a trauma frontline ICU nurse. I am a travel worker, this is how I make a living for my family. During COVID, I took so many assignments across this country, serving America. And those Airbnbs and those hosts and those families, helping them too, were what helped, what allowed us to go help those areas in this country. Otherwise, I would have been stuck. You talk about hotels, sir, but I would have been stuck paying like five times the price. I felt safer in a neighborhood, I was a single mother traveling. And there's hundreds of workers, everybody talks about how we're going backwards with all this, no. You guys obviously don't understand where the world is moving. Other people have other lifestyles, people commute more than ever, travel workers travel to work more than ever. They'd be out of a job without these kind of options and safer neighborhoods. Just, let me, I got a couple of points.
Hang on, Councilman, let her finish.
Oh, go, go ahead. Okay, so I was talking about the travel workers, there's a need for people for this. It's just not fair, it sounds like there's a lot of fear, speculation, and now I'm starting to realize, there's a lot of politics involved in this. And I just want to say now, from a moral standpoint, the good Lord is watching, and I don't think it's fair to hurt people's livelihoods. I'm coming here just for, to speak for the people, it's not fair to hurt other American families' livelihoods for fear, speculation.
Please, guys, nothing from the audience.
They're the safest kind of residents that exist, if you compare them to long-term renters or permanent renters. If you really understood how the mechanisms work and the laws, they're the fastest ones you can get out of there, they're... And, oh, and then you guys talk about how much money and effort this is gonna be to, like, push this through and stuff, but the state's gonna be coming with a law, other states are turning these as residential. And guess what? The state's gonna probably allow the city to get 6% tax, let alone, you know, people, American families should have the right to invest in properties. What's, how has that suddenly become so immoral in our economy for good, regular, American people to try? Are you guys talking about BlackRock? No, you guys never talk about big companies, you always talk about when regular Americans try to get by. Well, you know what? God forbid, one of you gets cancer, your spouse dies, or like another old lady I know who broke her hip, went into rehab, the only way she could keep her house is by short-term renting it out to a nice, actually doctor, a nice doctor, and it paid her bills. God forbid, any of you ever need this opportunity. And I just think this is an extreme overreach. I think people in our city would respect you more if you guys at least grandfathered those families in and had some kind of stipulation for them or something. I just, it's wrong, and it's not right, a one size doesn't always fit all. We have a city of what, how many people? Thousands of people. And one more thing, there's a statistic, for those who are saying it affects housing rates, there's a, in LA, they did an independent study, they banned half of the Airbnbs in that city, and that only affected the housing market by 1%. Another statistic for you, out of the 20 million American families who do these things nowadays that helps these families, only under, I think it was 1.8%, are all those freak accidents you guys hear about in the news. I mean, I hear gunshots all the time, and they're not Airbnbs either.
Thank you so much, ma'am.
Counselor Chair?
Yes, sir, Councilman.
Yeah, that hasn't been our experience here in Dearborn Heights at all.
Thank you.
Not at all.
Awesome. Thank you so much, thank you, ma'am. How you doing, sir? Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Yeah, Hassan Vazzy, Dearborn Heights, Shehan, Shehan Highway. Mr. Counselor Chair, I want to ask you for a favor, please make sure these two guys do not interrupt me when I'm speaking.
You know what? Officers, you hear that? Those are the two guys you don't want to mess with, so if they do, leave them alone.
Say that again.
I was, I was sitting at home watching the meeting, I was enjoying my evening, all of a sudden, like usual, like every evening, all these big machines pop up at six, seven, eight o'clock, nine o'clock at night, they want to cut the grass, and with this noise, with this unorganized, this is really, I was sitting having my coffee, having my chocolate. Would you allow me to give it to my, to our city?
Are you gonna share it with all of us?
You know, first of all, I do object to BMB. I object it very highly, especially now, I know we're going back and forth, it might be something that we need to look into it in the future here with the new administration, because unfortunately, right now, even though we're talking about the, who's gonna implement the law, how they gotta deal with it, we are, like Mrs. Kaminsky mentioned, we're short on police officers, and God help them what they go through every day, especially with the traffic, with dealing with people, and ordinance department. I mean, I want to show you a picture, just today, when the garbage came, beside the point that these guys, I mean, when they want to pick up the garbage, cars everywhere during the pickup day, and these guys have to go like a zigzag. And today, a bunch of papers on my, on the street next door to me, I took a picture, and see the guys, they cut the grass, they don't care, nobody cares anymore in this city. I mean, I remember when you used to come here and during the meetings, we see the mayor, the attorney, the police chief, the building department director, and if you have a concern, at least somebody could address your concern. I mean, I give credit for all these people, they come in every meeting, and they, they speak up their mind. Now, we're talking about the BMB. I'm on the planning commission, I didn't get the chance to be there last meeting, and I guess it was voted to bring it in front of you. If I was there, I will definitely go against it. And I'm against it now, and...
Against it as in you don't, you want them or you don't want them?
No, I don't want them, at least now. I mean, maybe this issue should be brought back in the future, I mean, in the future, when there is a new administration, when there is, we have enough police department, when there is a, an ordinance department that they can really, like Mr. Musk said, to put under, under the police department, and during the garbage days, and look at these people, they cut the grass, I mean, maybe we should organize this in the future, let these people have a business license, because you see them pop them everywhere, they come six, seven o'clock in the morning, eight, nine o'clock at night, and there is, you know, it's not organized. This city, unfortunately, and I say it very loud, for the last four years we've been involved here, it went down the drain. I mean, that's a shame to let a city like Dearborn Heights, I give you a lot of credit, you guys can sit here, you can say, "Okay, we're gonna do this, do that," you know, but, I mean, I feel it also for the, for the, some of the employees and the city, they can't do nothing. So I hope with the new administration, with the new mayor, he or she will come, I'm telling you, the people that come and object, they will come and object if the city is not run right in the future, and people will watch this. So for the BMB, I go back to this, I mean, there's a house across the street from me, it was remodeled, it was vacant for a long time. I was worried, I mean, to see, I mean, the neighborhood that we have, we all know each other, I mean, I don't want strangers into my neighborhood, especially if there is no rules or nobody, if I call the police department, call the ordinance department, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, no ordinance, I mean, people, God knows what's going on in the city. So just to be fair, in the future, maybe we need to look into the BMB again. I don't know if there is a way we can put this, to table it, or to put it, like, until in the future, we can discuss it, if there is way, like, when you, if it's leased out or it's rented as BMB, if something goes wrong, like this lady, she doesn't have, I mean, to deal what, what she's been dealing with, you know, when they rented, maybe we should put it table it, not, I mean, or, I don't know, something should be done until we really have the power to force the ordinance in this city. Other than that, we keep talking, I mean, I see both points here, but for the time being, I, I, I do object to BMB, and I hope that if you guys gotta vote on it, to vote against it. Thank you very much.
I have 30 seconds.
Go ahead, I'll give you 30 seconds.
One more quick point, too, just for you guys to be really aware for the future, there are some cases, and I even spoke to a resident here in Dearborn Heights, who, and regarding yours, well, one of the residents said that she didn't even, it's not even listed on Airbnb, it's possible that it could be a regular resident who's just letting people come in and out, it could be a drug recovery center, and I just wanted to mention this, that when you start limiting people's property options, people start to look for other avenues. A lot of people like having their homes in their hands and not just giving them up to long-term renters and such, or selling them, because they still are part of the community and want to be there, but a lot of them end up going towards like the group home route. There was a resident out here who said that if they do lose their ability to short-term rent, they will probably change their rental into a drug recovery home, and these are group homes that are protected under the Fair Housing Federal Law, and you can look all you want and Google that, and they're residential, and you better bet you're not gonna be able to even touch them. So you guys really should consider all of these things before you start, like, crunching the options of other Americans.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Listen, people are gonna do their best choices.
Guys, come on, guys, let's keep it respectful here. Just let me bring up... I'm gonna give you 30 seconds, guys, come on, guys.
That's all I need.
Guys, listen, let me, let me say something real quick here, real quick, please, everybody calm down for a second. This is gonna be, this is gonna be, this was not supposed to be, this is why I don't like it, this is why I like it. This was to give recommendation on what you would like to see on this ordinance, because we said we want to consult the residents. You know, and I, and I've heard almost every, I think we've all heard these stories, and we all hear the concerns, and we all hear, you know, the light, like, how is this gonna be enforced, right? But what I'm asking is for a solution, not just from this body, but from everybody. And I know I see I have two hands up that are also on Zoom, and I want to be able to give Dana and Marco the opportunity to speak, I'm gonna give you 30 seconds, and I'm gonna move over to them, too.
Okay, I just want to bring up the fact that when I was still working as an officer in this city, we did have rehabilitation homes, as she's speaking about, and quite often we were out there and locked them up, and eventually they were shut down, just so you know. I'm done.
Guys, let's keep it respectful, guys, speak to the chair, if you want to respond, speak back to the chair, please. Can I go to Mr., or whomever Dana is, real quick, because I know they've been raising their hand?
There is no problem for Dana.
You can stay up here, though.
I yelled for him.
Let's go to Dana, and then we'll go to Marco.
Good evening, counsel.
Good evening, Dana. Good evening, Dana. Usually you have your camera on, I don't know if you don't want it on, but it's not on.
Yeah, I, I see it's not on, let me see if I can figure out how to, oh, there we go.
There you go.
Sorry about that.
There he is.
Sorry about my voice, everyone, hopefully you can understand me. Yes, I did want to help offer some suggestions or some insight. As most of you know, I retired as a police officer. So since the city has decided for whatever reason not to participate today, I hope I can give you a little bit of insight. First of all, you know, there was some talk about, you know, police officer versus ordinance officer. And, and Councilman Constan was correct. There are a great deal of instances where the ordinance officer is quite limited as to what he or she can do, because they don't have, they don't have the ability to look into the law enforcement information network or lean. So they can't see certain things that police officers can see when they go to any scene. Also, if they're dispatched to one of these, these situations, police officers can readily arrest people who are disorderly, meaning they're causing problems for neighbors, disorderly intoxicated people, or malicious destruction of property. Ordinance officers do not have such authority. If they arrive, they don't have any such arrest authority or ability to do anything. They have the ability to write citations as, as you've said, for, for these ordinance violations for operating these kind of short-term rental facilities. But they don't have any other abilities, whereas you suggested a police officer who is assigned to this or a team, I think would be much more effective versus just saying, okay, ordinance officer can do it. And I think to crack down this whole thing now, one, one key point, back several months ago, maybe a year ago, you, you council chair tried to have a meeting, a public hearing, to address blight in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I recall very clearly that you invited a number of people to come to that meeting, that public hearing. And I recall very clearly that there were two people who were very, very clearly not pleasant, present at that meeting. Those two people were justices, our judges, who decided not to come. And you know, you folks are doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
But you know what? If our judges don't give us, guess what they're going to do with your law? They're going to do the same thing they've been doing with our ordinance and our blight violations. The same thing. Oh, those are just ordinance tickets. Those are just ordinance tickets. We'll give them 30 days to clean up their lot, we'll give them 30 days to, to mow their grass, we'll give them 30 days to get the car out of there. And you know what? You can make those violations $100,000. And you know what you'll collect? $25, $50. Court, court will dismiss that violation, see, because if you don't have the cooperation of those two justices, it doesn't matter what you say. It'll never happen. And I still haven't seen any cooperation from those two justices. I've never seen them come down there and work with you folks. And those are the folks you really need cooperation from. Yeah, you're going to need it from the administration, the police department, the ordinance department. I totally agree with you. But you know what? If you don't have those two justices, it doesn't matter what you do. And whoever the mayor is, it doesn't matter either. Because a mayor doesn't have any ability to set fines or make sure those things, justices administer. Judges alone ones can administer that justice. So sort of keep that in mind, that you have to work with those justices and make sure they do something. They're elected too.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to ask about or address, and this is a little bit off-topic, but it sort of is on topic. Van Buren corridor, which is part of this whole problem with blight and garbage and everything, we, uh, council chair, we talked about this.
Yep.
Unfortunately, our building department isn't there, but when a business is sold to someone else, I was quite sure that the new regulations were to take over and that that new business is supposed to comply with the new Dearborn Heights Taylor Van Buren corridor restrictions. And it looks to me that, I'm not going to name the business name, council chair, because I don't want to do that.
No, we're not going to say, yeah.
Right. It doesn't appear to be doing that. So I want to make sure that that gets handled and that we start seeing changes to Van Buren corridor, because we're going to look like, I remember when I worked for Taylor, they called the city Taylor Tucky. But you know what? Dearborn Heights is getting a reputation, because Taylor is looking good. They renovated Goddard Road, Main Street, did a wonderful job there, and now the Rico Road corridor. And we can't get Van Buren Road going. Their side, they've at least buried the streetlights. Our side, we've done nothing. So I think we need to get going and hopefully our new administration will get work on that. But in the meantime, that one business that we talked about, I'd like to see them have to comply with whatever our ordinance is on, on complying with that. But yeah, keep in mind that, that the, those, those laws need to be followed and that our judges need to enforce whatever we come up with. And I think a police officer is an excellent idea, maybe to help in concert with an ordinance officer, maybe that would be a good idea. Thank you so much, I'm sorry about the time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We're going to go to Marco and then I'm going to go to Zohair. Thank you, Dana.
Mr. Raydo, you hear me?
Yes, sir, how you doing, Marco?
Good, I hope you guys are all well. I had to put, just a couple of things I want to say. I own several Airbnbs in Miami and Chicago, and none in Dearborn Heights. Why? Because it's not a destination city. There's no reason for Airbnbs to be here. I, I'm born, raised here, went to school here, my parents still live here, I'm here all summer and whatnot, but Miami, I mean, Dearborn Heights is not a destination city, one thing. And I'll be quick so Mr. Rosemary can talk, he doesn't have to wait up there that much longer. I'm not going to ask if the mayor is there, because we already know he's not there, but is Roger there, man?
Roger's not here.
No longer, it's very well, let's hope we can keep it that way. Love you guys. Dearborn Heights.
Thank you, Marco, we appreciate you, we love you too. Zohair, Mashabul Haq, please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Zohair Alha, Rosemary. Everybody taking a shot at the mayor and he's not here, unfortunately, I would have took one at Hampton. America is the land of the free, I agree with the ladies who spoke, but your freedom should not exceed the freedom of others or step on the others' freedoms. And you guys are elected by the people to make the right decision, the hard decision, no matter what. And if your decision is not the right one and some people doesn't, don't like it, there is always courts, they can go to court and challenge it and if they win, good for them. And that's what I would do, I would, you ask what you should do with this ordinance. I think you should give the people who owns Airbnb 30 days, basically either to change it, to sell it, or to do something else with it, make it permanent rental. Deputize the ordinance officers so they can have little power to issue tickets, to probably take people to, to court, or maybe even arrest some people if they are out of order. And you should put very stiff fines, hurt them in their pockets is the best thing to do, because they do in this business simply because it is making more money for them than rental. So when you hit them with their pocket, probably they will change their mind and maybe either they sell it or they can make it permanent rental. You need to make the decision one way or another and not waste any more time, because it's going to fall on one of you, either Mo or Denise, to basically carry this ordinance, to execute this ordinance. And we hope and we count on it that you're going to do the right thing for the majority, because the majority rule in this city and the majority does not want this to happen in our city. So please, make a decision tonight and carry on, because that's what we, we elected you for. Thank you.
And before I, I'll, you know, we'll, we'll get to the two. Rosie's iPhone?
Did she quit?
Okay. It's copy Rose, it's copy you, trying to figure it out.
Yeah.
We'll go to Margaret next and then we'll go to Gary. Freezing.
Good evening.
Good evening, Margaret King.
Um, I hope you're all doing well. I just wanted to say something about the short-term rentals first.
Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on.
Margaret King, Mason Street, Dearborn Heights.
Thank you.
Welcome. Um, I understand like there's people that have had the Airbnbs or that own them and rent them out or whatever, but one bad apple, something that I learned as a child, very young, is one bad apple can ruin it for everybody. Just for a note to thought, I don't want to live next to one, I have a couple of houses that I'm afraid are going to get turned into a mine block. I want somebody that's going to be nice, sweet, that's going to take care of their property and do what they got to do to make my city look good. And then another shout out I want to do real quick is, thank you guys for painting the crosswalks. I saw when I was walking Riley the other day that the crosswalks are getting painted and that is being stayed up upon, so thank you guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, we're going to go over to Gary Miyaki, who is our special legal counsel. We actually, the city council's, uh, legal counsel is here.
Yes, council chair, I, was me aware by a resident that there are some questions and I apologize, but I was not aware that you needed me at this meeting and I apologize.
It's okay.
That I did not discuss that with you. Been a very eventful week for city council things the last few days.
Oh, I, I can only imagine, I hear. So, so Mr. Miyaki, I know Sally has some things written down and she, and the clerk is going to maybe read them off to you?
No, I can share the meeting with him if he wants to review it.
Sure, what meeting?
This meeting, the recording.
Yeah, I'm saying right now, if we want to just ask him some of the questions, if it's legal, get an opinion. Basically, Gary, on, on, on the opinion that we're trying to receive here, we're going through a third reading and we'd like to have in this ordinance, on any type of documentation before you get into a home, that there is an acknowledgement checked and signed separately from the sign of the entire, or some type of document acknowledging that you understand that you're not allowed to, you know, if this ordinance is passed, that there's an acknowledgement sent out to all rental properties and maybe the entire city, acknowledging, but I think ultimately on rental properties and any new future rental properties or only new purchase of any home, you acknowledge not to allow this home to be used as an STR. That's number one. Number two, to enforce fines on anybody that is publishing any, our STRs on any websites like Airbnbs and I don't know the other names, BRB or whatever the heck they're called. Sure, whatever the three, four companies names that are out there, that if you are enforcing or if you are marketing and we find out, you will be charged a $1,000 fine. And then if you are using that property under this ordinance, the fine would be a $5,000 fine per day that you allow this.
Okay, we have several different issues here.
Yep.
One of them is a concern about, I'm sorry, the amount of the fines. I, I know that a number of people have done this, you always have to recall that our city ordinances do not specifically address municipal civil infractions or blight violations. But the city charter says that the penalty is up to $500 in fines, plus up to 90 days in jail. These are not misdemeanors, so there is some variance from that, but $5,000, I think, is, strikes me as, is potentially more problematic. There's more of a risk involved with respect to the penalty. So I would, I would be hesitant to suggest that that would be an appropriate way to end up addressing this and I would have to research the issue to be able to give you a more definitive opinion.
Let's research the issue, but I can tell you right now, I'm firm on the $5,000. At least I am, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can tell you, I'm firm on it.
Council Chair.
Well, I'm going to finish with, let, let Gary go ahead and finish.
He's right, though.
And I'm sorry, council chair, there are three different issues that you stated and I'm trying to remember the other two or two of them.
One is an acknowledgement, an acknowledgement box.
When you get your C of O.
When you get a certificate of occupancy or any type of renewal, you have to check off...
Yeah, I don't see that as being a, a, excuse me, I don't see that as being a problem to have someone acknowledge that, just like you could have them acknowledge any other things whenever there's an application.
Okay.
Put in for the city.
And what else was there? Then what about the enforcement if caught, marketing online?
Yes, I believe that that can also be enforced. The real difficulty is how you're going to be able to actually take enforcement action against someone if they are out of state or something along those lines.
Well, we're, we're, it's going to put a lien, a lien, we're going to tax it to them.
Well, if we do it against the property owner, then we're, I think we're fine.
Yeah, well, that's, it's, it's never going to be on the person that's renting the house out. It's always going to be on the person that owns the property.
Yes, the, the, the point is, is that you, the ordinance provides, or the proposed ordinance provides for a presumption that person is marketing the property inconsistent with the ordinance or in violation of the ordinance if certain criteria are, are met, namely, and, and I don't have them all right in front of me, so I apologize, but if those criteria are met, then you would be able to say, hey, you're marketing this property. They would be able to come into court, namely, the property owner could come into court and say, someone did this without my acknowledgement or my authorization, but it would be on them to end up having to prove that to the court.
Okay.
Council Chair, I have a couple of other ones.
Okay, and then the clerk is going to read a few things to you.
Okay. To, and it had also been mentioned to notify or mail out to every non-homestead home to acknowledge that the STR ordinance that was on there.
He said that's okay, you can do that.
Okay. And then it was also mentioned about reimbursing the city for the PD that are handling the disruptions at the, at the STS.
Yeah, so that's $5,000, ultimately it would go to...
How, how will the city know how many days the rental is being occupied? How many, how, how will the city know how many days the rental is being occupied was another question. And then also about the restrictions.
That's an enforcement issue.
Okay. And then whether or not there could be deed restrictions. Um, I know councilmen have thought there wouldn't, that wasn't possible.
I don't, I don't know that that's necessary, but let's move back to the first issue. I'm sorry. You could end up having anyone who is applying for any sort of service through the city, a new certificate of occupancy, anything along those lines, sign some sort of acknowledgement. That's not necessarily the case that you can end up sending something and expecting people to be compelled to end up having to send a form that the city sends out acknowledging that they can't do this. I hope that that clarifies that issue. Uh, Council Chair Protem.
I think, Gary, Mr. Miyaki, I think we're looking for some kind of enforcement. And I did suggest to Council Chair that I think probably legal yourself, ordinance department, police department, and the building needs to set together and come up with some kind of enforcement because it's just, we keep going back and forth. Each one has a role to play in this. So, uh, I don't know how it's gonna happen. I don't know if we need another study session, but this is, needs to be taken care of right away. Uh, not sure if Council Chair has anything else to say, but, uh, do we have any more questions, Madam Clerk or?
No, I think.
But I know the, I know the building department, they need to send every three years, is it two or three years for the, I think every three, two years now? For the rentals.
For rental.
So I think they, they still need to send a mailer out to make sure that, you know, everybody has their inspection done. And if they don't have their inspection, then there's an issue there too.
Right, if I may, you reminded me of one issue, Council Chair Protem. Um, which is how do you know how long the person is renting? Well, if we know that the person is renting and they're saying that it's not a short-term rental, it's a long-term rental and they haven't complied with the city ordinance having to do with long-term rentals, then you can charge them with violating those ordinances as well, right? And you can also charge in the alternative. You can say violation of short-term rentals or if you're not complying with the normal requirements for rental properties, a person could be given a ticket for that. Um, a lot of this is, as Councilman Constan was, I think, referring to, more kind of administrative issues, enforcement issues. Um, but it can be done, I guess, is, to answer the question, there are ways to end up addressing people who try to say that, well, it's a long-term rental and then you're like going, okay, well, it's a long-term rental.
Are they registered with the city? Did they, did they do the actual inspections? Did you make sure that it's up to code? And so if it is, then you should have, you went through the process and if you're not, then you're lying.
Right, and then we can charge you for that as well.
Correct. Uh, Mr. Miyaki, I think one more thing, Mr. Dana Parrish brought a great point that we need to consult with our judges too and the courts. So it doesn't matter what we put here and it's gonna, they're gonna go to the court and the court is gonna dismiss our tickets. We did nothing. So, uh, what's your thought on that point?
My thought on that is that since the judges would be acting as the people who would actually judge these issues, uh, the normal approach that they've taken in the past when people have approached them is to say, these things could come in, in front of us, we're not inclined to end up giving some sort of provisional opinion with regard to this. Judge Foren did that all the time. I mean, if you went to him, he would just automatically do that. But I think it, it really comes down to it being a solid ordinance with solid enforcement action taken. And if that's indeed the case, I think both of these judges are fair-minded judges and, uh.
So you're saying it's a great idea just to sit down with the judges or consult, consult with them? Do you think you're, think he'll be able to do that?
I mean, I'm sure. Uh, Gary, real quick.
I'll say here, Councilman. I'm also.
Um, we have a resident has a question for you. Mary, uh, Laurie Molin.
Thank you. Hi, Gary, I got a question for you. Um, going back to what you just said as far as judges, they enforce. I don't know, I don't know why you're, I'm not trying to demean you in any way. I really am not. But a judge is there to enforce the laws that are established within the city jurisdiction. So that's a cut and dried, no question. There's no way that a judge is not going to follow with the city what the city's ordinances are, but let me.
Can I just, I just want to make a quick correction?
Sure.
We, we'll create the ordinance, the police or ordinance officers will enforce the law and then the judge will say if it was done presumably correct or not.
To what end? To what end? He's still enfor, he's still, he's an enforcer, but he's three back.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just know that that's what, the judge is not there to enforce. If you break, just like I'm coming after you.
Okay, semantics.
Yeah.
So Gary, I had another question, if you're still there.
Yeah, I'm still here.
Cool. Um, as far as, I was asking the question earlier to council and I'm still a little vague or I'm having memory loss, let's call it that. When you establish, back in the day, Gary, we used to have legal notices in, in periodicals, i.e. newspapers, publications. When someone, um, passed away and there was a legal notice that so-and-so and so-and-so who owned the property, um, were assuming the debt. Are you following me?
Oh, I think, are you saying some sort of disclaimer?
Well, no, if you change an ordinance, is it, is that something, because I'm from a small town, so pardon me. Um, if you change an ordinance and you put it out for publication and you put it, I believe back in the day, it had to be three different publications that you had to do that, three avenues. So if you're doing that as a city, and I don't know if that would be something as, um, the city attorney would do that once it's written by the city council or the mayor, would that constitute letting everybody know? I mean, do we really, I, I get the checking the box part, but there's a lot of us who have, who will not be checking that box. We've lived here for a while. It's not gonna come across our faces.
Well, if you're a short-term rental in this, I mean, if you're a long-term rental in the city, you have to get a certificate, you have to get a renewal of your CFO.
Okay.
So if you're a long-term rental, you're not, you don't need to check a box because we know you're living there.
Okay, so, so to the, to the first part of that question, would the publication be enough to be letting the citizens in that city know? Can that, is, is that something that would be done?
Yeah, the, the city charter provides, and this is consistent with state law and we did this a few years back, that all publication excepted as otherwise required by state law would end up being on the city's official website. And so after this ordinance is read, and you don't have to say it's the third time, for example, it's technically speaking a second time, a second reading is, is the way it is, should be termed. But after the second reading, it is to be published as provided by law, that would be on the city website. And that's considered to be sufficient notice to all property owners within the city that it is indeed been adopted. Here's the point though, if the city council wants to believe that it might be more effective or the city administration wants to believe that it might be more effective to, uh, for enforcement purposes to have people acknowledge this, then that's not an irrational approach for enforcement purposes. This is a new ordinance. Not everyone will necessarily know about it. And we want to encourage enforcement on a voluntary basis um, by virtue of giving people more notice than less notice. At least that, that would be a rational approach to this.
Cool, so this monthly periodical that the residents receive in the mail would also be a good avenue, wouldn't you say?
I, I would agree with that. I do want to address one point that you said earlier in terms of the judges. I think what the concerns are for the city council, um, uh, it are that, um, they might want to talk to the judges in, in order to feel comfortable that the judges aren't gonna have a problem if there is a challenge. That's the issue I was addressing. I was not addressing whether or not the judges have an obligation to follow the law they give.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. We're gonna go over to Rosie's over here.
Council, Council Chair, do you want me to stay on?
Just, just in case and to the end, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. Rosie, if you can hear us, please unmute yourself. What is it? I know, I see it. I'm seeing, I'm seeing the glitch. Okay. If we can't, then I'll open it up to final comments from council members. Do we have any?
Council Chair.
Councilman.
I just want to thank everybody who showed up today and whoever spoke today, especially the two ladies who spoke with the Airbnbs. They, uh, the points that they brought, I knew those points. I mean, for me being in real estate for the past twenty-two years and advocating for homeowners' right, doesn't mean that the neighbors has to lose their right to live freely in their home or enjoy their, their home.
I agree.
So, so that's why that was a tough decision for me. I was like, yeah, this, like, that Mr., I don't know, the guy who mentioned or the gentleman who mentioned, yeah, Dearborn Heights is not a destination city. So whoever, Marco. So whoever is coming here, they're not coming here for some kind of museum or some kind of, somewhere they're trying to visit. They're coming here just, the majority, I'm not gonna say everybody, just for trouble. So that, that's why was my decision is not to go with and to go ahead and ban Airbnbs in the city. Uh, and plus, we don't have the manpower, like Council Chair said, we don't have the manpower to enforce them. We can probably enforce banning them and that's all it'll take probably a few months and they're gonna be banned and that's about it. So it's not gonna take as much as enforcing them every single day. So again, thank you everybody for being here and thank you for voicing your opinion. And hopefully we can get all the departments together to come up with a plan that gonna enforce banning those short-term rentals. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Council Chair.
Councilman Constan. Thank you. Yeah, I, I agree. Thank you for everybody coming, everyone speaking out. And it was good to hear the two ladies' viewpoints. And as I said, that hasn't been our experience here in Dearborn Heights that people are having the short-term rentals to do things, that they, bad things that they can't even do at a hotel. Um, but let's get something enacted and on the books soon. It can be changed, modified, but let's get something.
I agree.
Passed and enacted.
Any other council members?
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel. Thanks for wearing green today for Michigan State.
Go blue. Um, regardless if, you know, if this, if this new ordinance passes or if we empower the ordinance department to be deputized or whatever it is, uh, we're gonna count, we're gonna have to count on a lot more. We're gonna have to recruit and depend on sixty thousand residents to make us aware.
That's it. They nailed it. They nailed it on the head.
No, because we can't be everywhere, but you guys are everywhere. And we don't know every house that's a short-term rental and by reporting it, that'd help us out a lot.
There you go. Man, spot on, man. Round of applause.
Dearborn Heights connect the app. They can use the app.
Yeah, and this should be a, that's, you know what?
Use the app.
You know, I knew, I knew you had some good right there in that brain right there thinking of something great. Uh, you know, that's not a bad idea. Create a portal where if a resident reports this house as an STR, bam, it's flagged.
We can add it probably on the app, Council Chair, that connect.
That's a great idea. Look, look at those thumbs moving around. Uh, any other council members?
I was gonna speak as a resident.
Okay, just state your name, the city you reside in, the street that you live on. You've got three minutes.
Yeah, right. I'm asking for five extra.
You've got three minutes.
I'm just teasing you. I wrote it down so I would go quick enough. Um, Denise Melonowski Maxwell, Dearborn Heights, Clairview. As most of you knew, I grew up in Dearborn Heights. My family moved to Dearborn Heights beginning in the nineteen fifties. They were part of making it the desirable city everyone wanted to move here for. It's a shame to see the direction it's been heading. When I bought my house years ago, I bought it because the neighborhood was quiet on purpose. I didn't buy it near a business. I checked the neighborhood out. I even went to the sexual offender list just to get an idea of what I was getting into when I moved here. I would have never bought it if there was an Airbnb next door. And quite honestly, when someone is looking to buy a home, Airbnb is not always obvious during the daytime. It seems to be a nighttime problem. Um, like I said before, if we don't do anything about this now, it could be coming to a home near any of us real soon. Also too, FYI, I don't know if everybody knows this, LLCs if, are anonymous if they are registered in the following states, Delaware, Wyoming, Nevada, and New Mexico. I suggest that when we have someone register an LLC, that they give us an actual street address instead of a PO box to hide behind. Um, and that's just my suggestions.
I like those.
But it is kind of scary knowing those states will not, you're anonymous when you file an LLC and you can bring it to Michigan and use that LLC.
Guys, I want to make very clear though, when we say things like we want to make changes to the law, we are not lawmakers. We are not the governor, we're not the state senator, we're not the state representative. We're, you know, that's way over our pay grade. We're, we're at, you know, we're the part-time guys here and part-time guys and gals that are looking out for the best interest of making sure that our city services are up, fighting for police, fighting for unions, fighting for things of that nature. Uh, seeing that we are done here, I want to thank you all for joining us. I want to thank those who are at home and watching. Um, and you know, I, I'm sorry that, you know, things like this are still really extending and I hope that we find a solution and I hope that when we make some of these amendments, this body will be able to make this decision and I believe it's gonna get passed unanimously and we'll be able to put a stop and end. But again, like kind of Councilman Wenzel said, gonna take all of us, not just one of us. Thank you.